Okay, we're in call to be in order. Uh, we'll call everybody who's here. Addition to the agenda, we have number 200 consent agenda. And we have number 11. Motion now. Is that all?
That is it.
Okay, with those additions, I have a motion to adopt the agenda. So we will.
Second.
Motion by Bruce and a second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Aye and a whole same sign. Motion carries. Uh, number five, approved or correct amendments from the August 13th. It's very good meeting. I'm making a motion that will be approved. Motion by Bruce.
Second.
And a second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
A whole same sign. Motion carries. And six, we have July financial reports, a charter report and a loan for down. Uh, there are just a couple negative ones and expenditure report, um, one for $6,759.
That really, we, we are budgeted for that. We just have not completely done for capital budget. We haven't broken that down into smaller pieces. So that, there is dollars for that, but we're not, um, in the negative there. And then the other one, uh, I think the third page is like work with copy, learning that all the time you see a lot of negative, tell again, break that down and pay, pay it over.
Anybody have any questions? Uh, did anybody have a motion to approve? A motion by Lou.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
A whole same sign. Motion carries. Uh, and seven, July and August 13 bills.
I had the opportunity this, uh, afternoon to come into the district office and redo the additional July bills and, and August bills as written. Um, the only, the only one that kind of stood out, but I think they explained it to me pretty well, is that there was a $22,000 per fuel that we had filled up on, um, some of the fuel tanks that we had used up last year, finished it up last year, and now we just refilled it. So that was one of the big things that, you know, isn't normal. So, um, other than that, um, I didn't see anything that was, hadn't been normed. So I'd make a recommendation to approve the additional July and August bills as written.
Okay, with motion by Mark. Second by Lou. Any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
A whole same sign. Motion carries. And eight, uh, we have two items on the consent agenda. Was there any further comment necessary or?
Where the, um, site improvement plan on David Orland, Miss Gold has been taken care of, the, that particular piece. And this is an annual, I think that's on the agenda.
I'm willing to approve that.
Okay, second. Motion by Cheryl and a second by Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
A whole same sign. Motion carries. Business, number one, review and consider approval of college in the schools concurrent enrollment agreement between Central Lakes College and Bayes County Schools through 13, 14 school year.
And I should just for the consent agenda, if I could go back on, just for a second, that is not a new position. It was caused by the unfortunate passing away of a person that we had given permission to. So it's not an additional cost to, to the district. Just for clarification.
Okay. And, uh, comment on the, uh, item number one?
Comment, I'm gonna let, um, Lori come and hand these over. Did you get some up by the front?
Yes, there's some up.
Just can hand these over. We have a few new board members, so we're gonna give a little bit of an estimation on some of these college pieces that we have, so that we can fill in everybody and answer any questions that you might have on these.
Uh, I think in general, I thought I'd just kind of present what the college in the school program is and then talk a little bit about colleges that we utilize their program. Some of you that have gone through this, um, may have been with the committee about eight years ago. When I first came, we had a committee that looked at college in the school. Should we offer it? Should we offer the club program? Should we offer the college advanced placement? What should we do for our students? And that committee decided college in the school was the best program for us to offer. Um, some of the reasons, one, to have the college credits here. It keeps our students on campus, so then they're not wasting time traveling, which means they're losing fewer hours in our building taking classes. It also allows us to up our rigor. It keeps kids motivated and also they have found out over the past 10 years that it's been offered, is many more students are trying to go to college. Students that are taking credits in high school are finishing four years or less. All of those things are great for the students themselves at no cost to them. They don't have a cost when they're taking them here in the high school. It also allows our teachers that are teaching those courses to interact with college professors because when you have a college in the school program, they have to have the colleges through Minskew, the Minnesota College Program. They have to be facilitated by a college mentor. So there's different ways, different colleges provide that, that there's always a mentorship between our high school teacher and that mentor who only upgrades our instructors. Uh, also, some of the other, uh, benefits, um, I think it also increases, you know, the student's own self-confidence in what they can really do. The other piece is many of the courses that we offer are semester college courses, but the colleges allow us to spread it over the year. So when you look at Calc One in college, we offer that semester of Calc One, but we spread it out over the year. So our students are able to engage and practice those skills more with the instructor than they would in that college situation. And I think that's a benefit to our students, so they can enter college at a higher level, but yet have practiced the material more than if they took it as a semester of, you know, on a college campus. Different programs though, uh, when you look at PSEO and if you look kind of the last bullet, uh, college in the school falls under, uh, what they call post-secondary enrollment options, that, that information in the state legislature. Curricula, our college in the school, we are able to keep those students on our ADM count, on our student enrollment count. So we get, uh, the formula aid for the education, um, we also get the compensatory aid. We pay the college a fee for offering their section or their course. And usually it's a total fee. Um, there's one college we utilize. If we go over 20 students, there's an additional per student fee on that. Then other programs that are out there, um, there is what we call, there is just a standard PSEO, which you hear a lot of, and that's when a student decides they don't want to attend your campus part-time or full-time, they go to the college, they enroll, we receive no funding for that. And usually those students, um, lose educational time as well because of the drive time, you know, if they're part-time students. So we do not get any, um, funding for those students, although those students are able to transfer those college credits back, also receive high school credits to go on their transcript and graduate from their publics, or their, um, public school or our high school. Okay? Um, the online Infinity program, which our district offers as well as kind of a hybrid, uh, it is, um, they, we offer both high school credits through that as well as college credits through that program. Um, we are able to keep those students on our ADM count for the compensatory part of the formula as well as a very small part of the academic part of the formula, uh, but not the total. Uh, and then we pay a per course fee for that program. So, um, it allows our students a lot of flexibility. It also allows a lot of different options for students taking different courses. Um, you may have also heard of advanced placement courses. That is one, at the time our committee was put together, and I still think we went with the best choice. Advanced placement is similar to college in the school. It's taught in the high school, similar requirements for your instructors, except the advanced placement, they do have to go to a summer training. That is a pretty significant training, uh, but their credit is based solely on the tasks they take at the end of the year. And, um, very limited, low percentage, I think it's less than 20% of the kids actually pass that advanced placement course in order to receive those credits and be able to transfer the credits. Um, instead of getting a college grade or a high school grade through the entire time they are in the course. Do you see the, the difference with that? Um, now, on the other side though, is the advanced placement are nationally accepted without question. The college, our college in the school program as well as others across the state, um, we have, we have not, public schools, Wisconsin, North Dakota, Nebraska, we have had no problems and even beyond that with the acceptance of those credits. South Dakota is an issue, um, and private schools sometimes are issue. That is getting much, much better, but we always encourage students to check with those college counselors to see if those credits will transfer. Um, and now a lot of colleges are even starting to post, you know, will accept credits from these colleges, et cetera, on their website. So it's becoming more user-friendly for, for students, excuse me. Uh, the club program, we can have students, and I have signed students up for the club test. I usually use St. Cloud, uh, their high school, but there has been very accommodating when we have a student in one of our foreign languages, we want to try to test out. That is a test out. They don't receive actual college credit, but if they go in and say they want to take Spanish, if they test out a Spanish, they can test out a Spanish one and start in Spanish two. They haven't received credits for it, so they still have to take X number of credits, uh, but it's allowed them to start at a higher level. So we can, we don't have a club certified tester in, in our district, but we have set it up with the use of St. Cloud. So we have students, and we have done it probably a handful of times to our language requirement. Going down just a little bit, uh, the courses that we offer here in the building currently, um, college algebra, that is our pre-calc course, college calculus and the college trig are both taught at, as part of the calculus course here. Uh, the intro to statistics is the new one we'll be offering next year. That's our algebra, advanced algebra two course. The microeconomics, that's our one that Dawn teaches, that's every other year. Advanced psych, that is the one, uh, Mr. Youngs is teaching. Uh, our honors English, that is bi-yearly. Um, it's, we teach the composition one year and then literature the other year. So that's how that one works. If you flip the page, then.
Kind of the numbers.
Oh, I can.
Three, three, five.
Oh, those are credits, college credits, sorry. Um, do you want the numbers of enrolled kids in those courses? Are you interested in that?
I think that'd be very interesting.
Okay, here you go. I thought of that as I was leaving, but I didn't get it on the tight one. Okay. College algebra 25, college calculus 17, college trig 17, intro to statistics 25, econ, we don't have this year, so I don't have numbers there. Uh, advanced psych 14, honors English, the composition, we don't have this year, but honors English is 25. And most often, students that take it the first year automatically take it the second year.
Are the juniors and seniors that take these or?
Juniors and seniors at this point, yeah. The one thing I do see that we are missing as we move forward, um, I would like to see us offering something in the science area. Um, I know Mr. Rasmussen has shown interest and has, um, started to look into, um, getting a master's in biology and looking at like our advanced biology or advanced chemistry to, to offer. So, um, if you flip over to the next page, uh, we also have several, uh, courses that we offer, and we don't offer all of these this year, but these are ones that students can apply to. We have, we do have some of them offered this year. Uh, there's the CTE college credited classes. They're the ones through the two-year colleges that are accepted through the Minskew system. Um, and you can see there, there's several different ones. Our advanced help is always full. Um, Land Trans has good numbers, uh, that look to get that certification and those credits. Uh, the egg welding usually does as well. So, but those are courses we, you know, students look, tell, tell the instructor, do they want to look at getting the college credit? And they modify those courses for those students so that they are able to do that. So those are there. Um, the online, uh, college credited courses, that students can take through our Infinity program. Uh, our statistics, current events, forestry, forensic science and composition. And we don't have any students this year taking them, but it is an option. So like when we can only offer one section and only one hour of the day and say it doesn't work in a student's schedule, they, sometimes we do have that other option for them. Okay? Uh, down below, these are the different contract we're looking at tonight. Uh, the differences lie in just the individual colleges, how, as far as cost, how they set up their program and, and how they build. Uh, Central Lakes is one, is, and Fond du Lac, Southwest Minnesota State University we use, and Ridgewater's Community College, that is more of a tuition agreement contract. It's kind of like a hybrid. It's, we maintain the A, but we pay out a cost for the kids to take the credit and then those kids don't actually, are, they're, they're not going PSEO. So they're still off our campus though, so it's not considered college in the school.
So if you take the Ridgewater Community College, does that relate to the CTE college credited classes?
Yeah, the CTE ones.
So this are combined.
Well, no, the CTE ones above are ones we have on our campus and we can get credit from Ridgewater or Avelig for St. Cloud debt. The ones in that Ridgewater Community College down below that we pay the per student credit, that's on the Ridgewater campus.
Okay.
Students would be going down there.
So which ones are the Central Lakes and Fond du Lac and South Minnesota?
Okay, Central Lakes are our two honors English. Then all for math and the econ are Fond du Lac. And the psych is Southwest. And the, the primary difference between Central Lakes and Fond du Lac run pretty much the same as far as how they run their program. Southwest allows for teachers that don't have any masters in the subject area, but have 45 hours or more of credits in that area, pass their undergrad to teach a college course. Um, they have a different mentorship program set up that is more involved or more engaged with the professor. Uh, I do believe that's why there's, you know, that's why they say theirs is more expensive than the other ones. The other ones, you have to have a master's in the, in the area for the subject, so. So they have a different mentorship. Yes, Jeff?
In the orange sheet, it says 1,500 per course, per semester. And here it says a thousand dollars for Central Lakes. Do you know how much that is up in at 1,500 per course and then five dollars per credit hour? What does that equal up?
Okay, the five, no, okay, wait, where, where, I think I was looking at that earlier. Uh, wasn't that the one?
On the first page.
This business on the orange sheet.
On the orange sheet. Is that the one that we, per credit hour, per student? Uh, that was if they took it online. So the 1,500 dollars is if we're offering it here, but students can also take it online?
Then it says a thousand on here, that's last year's.
That's last year's, that's last year's.
So that, the piece is only if they take it online, then it's five dollars?
Right. It's a straight 1,500 dollars per.
Do we know approximately what we all take out for all the courses, like the last year? We have that number approximately?
We can get it.
And what approximate, for what we have signed up right now, what, what are we paying out and what do we receive?
I can get it.
You don't have it in front of you, so.
No, but I, I'm just saying.
We would, we would have an issue getting that before.
Well, it's just kind of, I mean, I wouldn't say that we shouldn't do it, I'm just saying, but it's another information for everybody to understand what, what it actually costs for them to school the different.
Okay, we need more, we need more college credits, but we need to know how much it actually costs for a button seat so we can.
No, very good question. I can bring that to the board next time.
My question to instructors, sorry, too.
Well, if you'd offer the class anyway.
And we have a local, one of our instructors teaching it, is that an hour for them?
Well, yeah, but for, for the most part, that's a wash because if those, the numbers here, for example, you could argue the 17 and 14 is over giving a little bit lower, but like the 25, that might be a typical class anyway, so I'm not sure. Those students would have to be someplace if not in these, in these classes.
And we would offer an upper math class anyway? I mean, you'd want, you know, you'd have that upper math class, most likely if you had the numbers anyway. So it would be the extra cost though for running through the college.
You know, when we start to look at budget again for next year, certainly that's part of the piece that we have to look at, is how many students are in each individual course, whether it be a, a college credit course or whether it be just a, a, a non-college credit course. That's where you have to draw the line and, you know, we have that discussion on the Lance Trans, for instance. You know, so many students in there, there's legitimate reasons why you want to put so many students in there, but then you have to look at the total cost. Fewer students in, typically the higher cost per student in the classroom. But we can pull up all the information for the board and give you the total costs on what we did for last year and I think maybe for project. At least for the first semester for this year.
And probably what I would, um, and what I'd also pull up for you and separate out is Infinity, because most of our credits through Infinity are just high school option credits. We have very few kids actually take them for college credit. It's just a high school option, but it is another program that you're providing. Uh, the other, and I do have it written in here, we do get a very small amount of funding for offering college in the schools, but that funding changes in the formula every year because they have set aside a certain amount and depending, and you get X number of dollars per student divided by all the students that take college in the schools across the state. The first year, I was a high school principal, it was 175 dollars. I think last year it was 52. I mean, it just says, you know, just more kids are taking.
52 dollars per student.
Per student.
So 52 times 25 kids.
You know, it.
And that's it.
So you do get that.
To a degree, we're getting close to the numbers of paying for this.
Right. And the state tries it to do it as an incentive.
I gotcha.
So, but that does change every year what that is. Other questions?
Is the information we gave us, is that something that people read? Or there, it seems to me sometimes when I talk to people, there's a disconnect between what the parents know their kids can get done here and what maybe the kids know they can get done here and what we offer. And my lessons, that's, that's most of what, what I get.
And I think if that's what you're getting, I think we need to do a better job than getting that information out. So this, and after putting this together, because actually Bob gave me a heads up that some of you might have questions, I think this would be good information to put in, you know, our district newsletter.
We need to pray about this stuff. I think it's fantastic.
And that. And then I am this year having a meeting with all of our classes and with our high school classes. I'm not giving them this exact sheet, but gonna talk significantly about some of the different program options, because usually we do it at registration, um, but it's a very short period of time, so trying to get a more in-depth.
You might also want to touch on whether or not these are easily, um, acceptable at other colleges, because a lot of times you hear, you can take a whole bunch of courses, but they only are good at this college or that college or.
In Valley does it through the Minne, University of Minnesota, and this school does it through this school. And it's like, hmm, I kind of think we offer that, but it'd be real interesting to know. Okay, any other questions on that for Lori?
All that being said, on the motion.
Okay, with motion by Deb for item number one on business and a second by Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
A whole same sign. Motion carries. Number two, I think it's on the same topic, review and consider approval of the current enrollment program between Southwest Minnesota State University and Bayes County Schools through 13, 14 school year. And will we approve? Motion by Bruce and a second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
A whole same sign. Motion carries. Number three, review and consider approval of PSEO tuition agreement between Ridgewater College and Bayes County Schools through the 13, 14 school year. Motion by Cheryl and a second by Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
A whole same sign. Motion carries. And I think there's one more, I remember as a parent, number eight, too. Is that, is that okay?
That's correct.
Uh, number eight, review and consider approval of PSEO tuition agreement between Fond du Lac College and Bayes County Schools through the 13, 14 school year.
Someone's.
Motion by Deb and a second by Lou. Any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
A whole same sign. Motion carries. Okay, uh, back into number four, review and consider approval of contract for at-risk employment counselor services with the covered plus St. Cloud Hospital for a budget of 12,328 dollars through the 13, 14 school year.
In the, in the past, um, we have budgeted a certain amount for the service and the grant has given additional days for that. Uh, the grant has run out. Uh, we will not, most likely get those days, although I think they're looking to see if there's any way they can get another, um, matching type of grant for that. Uh, I did budget a certain amount and what happened is that their costs went up and what they were gonna charge us was more. At this point in our budget, I'm unwilling to add anymore to our budget. So that's why there will be some reused services, just because we will not offer as many, we won't offer the day and a half like we did before. It's, if we're gonna set up a schedule to get through the whole year, depending on the month that we budgeted, and that's it. Uh, most of the dollars are coming from the general fund, but there is a little bit of dollars also being contributed by the Weaver Foundation.
How much time do they spend on this, with these people that come in with the first?
We, last year we had basically three days because we had the grant portion last, or last year as well.
What determines when?
Um, it, it, the person that this would be is Heather Anderson through the hospital. Um, usually it was Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but kind of depended on the week if we needed or she came in. Um, she works with another high school as well as, um, for an independent program, so.
She, she has people that come to see her?
Uh, some, some are. Some are that teachers have seen that they're showing adverse behavior. Also, if we have students that, um, make some bad choices and feel the counseling would help either due to chemical use or.
Alcohol.
Alcohol, alcohol, all of those things.
So last year when you had them eight days, were they used all the time?
She was full.
And then some.
It is gonna significantly impact.
So do we have an idea what the budget is?
Well, the, the budget that I thought would give us a day and a half, I think was like 12,000, I think five dollars to Weaver Foundation. The Weaver Foundation, they said they would throw a few more dollars in there. But that was it. Now that would have given us the day and a half until then they told us that they're raising the cost. I don't know if I would say considerably, but enough so that I only budgeted this amount. And particularly with our role and where it is.
So how much time are we having here this year?
We didn't, it'll be less than a day and a half.
It'll be less than a day and a half.
Because.
I got that, but how much of a less? You guys know the numbers, we don't, I'm just asking a simple question, how often are we doing?
It's divided by thirty. Just their rate went up from twenty-eight to thirty. So it was a twelve thousand?
Three thousand, I think it's twelve thousand.
Twelve, three, twenty-five.
But that's not going to happen anymore.
No.
And that was going to be how many days, I'm sorry.
We're getting that right.
Paul, park in here, guys.
It's going to be about eleven hours a week.
No, there's no way of you knowing, but.
We're, we're, I mean, I'm guessing it would be an hour to two hours shorter.
Even a day and a half was going to be shorter, I just think this is a position that. Yeah, it's big, I don't see how we can get by, I just, that just seems like putting a Band-Aid on a hole in the dam to me.
Do we have other grants available?
How much would it cost, how much more would it cost to put us up to at least what we had last year?
Oh, that would be, uh, it'd be, we didn't have it figured out. It would probably be like twenty, I mean, well, twenty-four, twenty-five thousand. But it'd be like, probably thirteen thousand more.
Are there other grants available?
They're, they're, they're looking for more grants, and I'm not saying we can't use the time, guys, I'm not saying that. And certainly if the board wants to go down that path and add more. Again, I would point out at this point, we're, we're down below and in my report will be more. If we add it, it's just going to be that, and I'm not saying it's not worth it.
It's not the fact whether it's, if it's worth it or not, it's like, it's needed. We have kids that need to be saved or intervened or helped at this point. And for there to just be nothing four days a week, that's just.
Well, I remember the grant paid for one of those days, so.
I understand that, I'm just saying, I'm not arguing where we are financially, believe me, I know that. But what I'm saying is, of all the things that we could, we're not taking pom poms away from the cheerleaders here, we're taking, you know, kids' lifelines away, some of them. These are at-risk kids or kids that have already gotten into trouble, and this is, for a lot of them, this will be their only connecting kind of.
I'm not debating that, if the board's desire is to spend money on that, then I will.
I sure would look into it.
What are other schools doing?
Some have nothing, some have more.
I don't even go by that, Bruce, I know this, three days and two is busy all the time, and I know from being in the community as long as we have, we know the kids that have been helped by there being somebody there. Families.
I understand, Bob, I was going to make the name.
No.
Well, it's looking better than it was, so I'm a little more optimistic right now, you know, we're down twelve versus, you know, in, in, in the low twenty. But it, it's still going to be a tight budget on a year that we're negotiating with every group. Certainly I can look at it and I can bring back, I mean, if the board, the board has two kinds of options to this. You can certainly table this, but then we can't start with it. You could approve this one and we could look at adding possibly more, because then all that would do is take another motion to put on there to say that we're going to extend it by this.
Would we still be able to get the same person?
Yeah, we're already, right now, at the very worst, if you approve this, we will start with what we've approved. And we'll bring back to the next meeting on at least the, the costs of all of it and the exact hours that we have, so that you have that information. I would prefer that we start now, because there are some kids that we don't want to waste time on, or we can sort it. Waste time starting them. So I would like, I'd rather not wait on this, you know, we can always come back to the board and if things either change or the board's desire is to add more time, we can do that.
I make a motion that we approve this as is and revisit it and.
Send it to the.
Another meeting, at the next meeting.
I'll send it to the.
Motion by Luke, and second by Cheryl, if you get that. Is that general comments, right? Need further discussion?
Just a quick one, I know that we have a motion pending on the table, but how long does it take to look into grants, see if there's other money out there somewhere?
Well, they, yeah, there's no quick answer to that. I mean, the, the organization that we go through certainly has been looking for grants. They don't want to lose this. The, the trouble with grants is that they come and then they're gone, and then after you become used to having that particular service for that amount of time, then you either have to pay the additional cost, look for another grant, which they've been doing, but those don't just grow on trees. And, you know, or you reduce.
Anything else? Okay, how is the favor, same as I say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign. And it carries. And then you can step off, so that I may ask how to say more.
Okay.
Uh, number five, for business.
All righty. We need to discuss evaluation and set a timeline to evaluate our superintendent.
I did send out those model pieces that M S B A did, I did put one copy up there, but it was a trio, so I only made one copy. For the most part, when I sent it to the board, the comments that came back to me from board were either one or two. I think three or four really don't work well, because at least for last year, if we wanted to look at those for this incoming year, I think we could do that. So really, it kind of came down to one or two. My problem with two is that it's pretty general. My problem with one is that it's just a checkbox, so one suggestion to the board, I mean, I don't like any of the tools don't excite me a whole lot, I think we could do better, but I think we need to look at what other districts are doing and also look at the, the pieces that superintendents do, there are actual skill sets out there that are put together that says these are the things that superintendent should do and try to build something off that or borrow something from another district that is using it. But I think because we're kind of moving down the road, we're already starting, and next year I'd say, I prefer we don't put this up any longer. So my suggestion might be to use number one, but in number one, instead of just one and then it ends, put a, a space down there. And for each of those competencies, you could have one place that said strengths and one said weaknesses, and then each board member could on their own separate evaluation book at the thing they might leave a blank. Or they may write a strength or they may write a weakness.
What was the count on your survey, which, which policy or which form do you use?
I didn't get results back from everybody, but I think it was one or two that, that came in. The ones that, that responded, it was one or two. Like I said, three and four really don't work because they're built on specific goals and then evaluating those, at least for last year, it won't work.
How many promotions that we use number one, with what he has leaving room for a kind?
I, I don't think you need to, to make a motion or anything, I think it's just bring back what you need to do, and then you need
Timeline.
A timeline to say it's going to be done at this date, and so we can put it on this board agenda and then determine whether you're going to go to closed session or open session to discuss it.
I think we should bring it up at the next meeting, that's two weeks for all of us.
We have it done and brought back by then?
I'm just thinking.
So we need to have a set of meeting time for a close.
Well, the, the meeting would just be during, well, if it's an open one, you discuss it right here. If it's closed, you would go in to close the meeting to talk about, there's some verbiage we'll have, you'd have to use in order to do that, but it's just to close the meeting, then you close, you go and talk about it with me in a, in a, in a closed session, you come back, there's a short description on what you, the, then that was talked about in, in that piece. So you don't have to say everything that was talked, but you also have to report back to the public on at least the general pieces of it. Of course, the more specific, the better. I don't know if it has to be done at the next meeting or, but you do have to, or at the same meeting, or, but you at least have to inform the public of what was discussed.
So how many superintendents do it open as compared to closed?
I only know of one that does not open. That I know. There may be other ones do it, and the only reason is that I was reading some articles and they talked about the fact that the superintendent had an open meeting, that's, that's why I opened the article, because I was curious. On, because it was a little different than what's typically.
I suggest that since this is your first evaluation and several new members on the board, and some of us that have been around and weren't real thrilled with the way they were done before, that we would do a closed session so we can all be comfortable with the process before we take it out in front of the.
Sure. And, and it's, it's really a more decision on this. I will check then to see, I, I just off the top of my head, I'm not sure whether you have to report something back that very day or whether it is, I know you have to report back, I'm just not sure if it's the very day or you can do it next board meeting. I think that the more information you provide, that my only concern with doing it the same day is that, you know, I think you should provide the public with some information. I don't think it should just come in two sentences and then we're off in line. I think you should provide them with some things that are, are said, I think that's what it's for, and that's why you have to provide the public with that.
With all of that, if we have it closed, then is the next meeting to rush, should it be a meeting after that?
I, I think it's up to, I, I mean, I want you to put some time into this. Okay, there, there's always this dilemma. If you make it too long, you procrastinate and you don't do it. If you make it too short, you don't have time to put the thought in, because it's really the pieces where you think about strengths and weaknesses that are a little bit more important to me than just checking, or if there's a piece that you want to say, well, yeah, I noticed this and, you know, this would be something to look at. You know, those types of comments sometimes can be the most useful versus a number, it's very easy to, to collect the numbers. And once you check it, you get a, a number, but that doesn't always tell the story. You know, sometimes the comments tell much more of a story than, than they got a two-point five on this sort of a five-point scale.
But the second meeting, the admin, do the admin reports actually come?
Uh, next meeting would have to be on the reports.
So, but would the meeting after that, it'd be maybe a little, potentially a little shorter? Maybe that would be the wisest, give us all a month to put it together and then.
That sounds like my need for, so I can see that, I can see you guys.
I do like the idea of tools for this first one at least.
Yeah. What I will do is I'll take that form and I'm going to put a gap between each one of those questions and, and I might put strengths and weaknesses, and it doesn't have to be just that, it could be any general type of comment that you think is worth putting for that specifically. I do think number one will get into more pieces. But again, I, I think we, we probably have to do some looking just to find a tool that I think does what the board wants.
We could even have a subcommittee do that.
Yeah.
After we do it the first time, then we have an idea.
That's what I mean.
Then we have our format to go forward and make it fair and well.
You know, when you have winter conferences and, you know, we can ask at other conferences that, that take place, too, and I can call some subs.
They've been offered a couple of times courses at the M S B A conference on how to evaluate. I went to a couple of them, they were mostly for like big cities, I mean, they like, it was involved the press and we had a post office box and everybody got something in the news, I mean, it was.
For it's ordered by lawyers.
Yeah.
Because I would like this to be a worthwhile exercise for both the board and myself.
All right, so we're looking at the, not the next, but the following meeting, first meeting in October.
And we're actually going to do the evaluation?
Yes.
Well, it'd be a second meeting, a second meeting in.
Second meeting of September.
We have the results of second September, not October.
What you would, what you would do is bring, and that's a, that's a question.
We have the closed meeting in between.
Well, no, the closed meeting can happen right at the board meeting. That's typically when they do, unless you have a special board meeting specifically for that, so it'd just be towards the end, you close the meeting, go on a closed session, do the evaluation piece. I'm just thinking it would be nice to at least get some information tabulated.
That's a good idea.
Before that, I'm just not quite sure how to do that without having us tabulate the information. It's probably not the best piece to have the superintendent tabulate his own, own data for the evaluation.
All of the past, it's been done with the super, I mean, the board chair did it with the numbers, went in, I don't believe that was.
I mean, at the end of the day, you can just, we all come with our stuff and then somehow just circle what majority exists and then just kind of go from there. I don't think we need to tabulate anything. The biggest thing, I think, for an evaluation that, like you said, that is worth any need or assistance or anything is what, what is written, not a, not a number, because there's, how do you take, how do you evaluate a number? You know, my number four is different than somebody's number three or whatever, but the more conversation we have of how you're doing and stuff is going to be more, I think.
But our initial one is going to have more numbers.
Yeah, correct.
This time around, what would be so wrong with just saying, one-one we answered, whatever, one-two we answered, whatever, and just give out somebody and they can tabulate it, it should be a big deal.
Well, I mean, there is, there is one other piece that I could, let me talk to Matt. Because it is, it might be possible, do this over a Survey Monkey type of thing. Where we just send you the link and it will tabulate everything itself. I don't want to commit to that, I like to talk to Matt, but that would be an option too.
We could set it up to send to.
We'd just send it to the board members and.
But then who would have that document?
Well, Matt would collect the document, because he would, he would have access to the particular piece, and I don't think there's anything necessarily that I'm too worried about that, as long as it's not coming to me until the board has had a chance to see it.
Right. And I don't know if we want to just give it to a layperson either.
Well, Matt doesn't necessarily have to look at the results. I don't, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just bringing that in.
You know, I mean, this is in the evaluation that we want to, you know.
Yeah, and certainly, we could do just what you said, it's not necessary, it was just the fun.
Well, that's a, what if we just did it, wherever we have this meeting, it's probably in one of the rooms, and I know it's old fashioned with chalkboards. You want to take much to cut around that?
Line chart.
Have a good summer.
Not going to take too much.
No. Okay.
All right, so we've got that settled, so we'll move on to the next item. Number six, review and discuss policy two oh six. Public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings, and data privacy consideration.
Um, this particular policy is, it marks as a draft policy, it's exhibited, it's kind of our first reading, it'll take a little bit more time to go over it just because we haven't uncovered it, I did send it out to you. The first, it is built off of the M S B A model policy. That's where we kind of started with this, the policy committee took a look at it and we came up and we left some of the things in place that were on the policy. The purpose is really just the intro to it, participation by the public, conducting orderly and efficient proceedings, that's what it talks about. Also provides procedures to assure open and orderly public discussion, protective process and privacy rights. That's kind of the overall purpose of the policy. I don't want to read it all to you. General statement policy again is to encourage discussion by the citizens of subjects related to management of the school district at board meetings. And also go adapt reasonable rules to make sure that everything runs effectively and efficiently. All right, and I'm just, I'm just going to kind of go through these things, if you have a question, just stop me. The definitions, self-explanatory, just gives some explanation on what personal data is, what public data is. See as personal data, current, former applicants, educational data, student data, you can just read those through the. That comes right straight out of the M S B A model policy. Then it goes into rights of privacy, and again, it talks about the legal rights of the information that you can share and you cannot share. Talks about complaints, and I do believe that complaints should always be handled at the lowest spot. If there's an issue with teacher, I would really like to see parents, for what they're concerned to the teacher. And then if that doesn't work out, the principal is there to work, work on it, and then so on and so forth, but I do believe that that establishing order of addressing a piece should, should be followed. Um, the public's opportunity to be heard again is to give citizens in the school district. not trying to be heard. Now, when we get down to procedures, that's really where it started just to go together for, for pain stones. All right? We talked about the open forum, and I think what we've been doing as far as before the first meeting a month is what we were looking at doing. Okay, same thing, first meeting a month, go out of forum, add it to either myself or the, the superintendent, yeah.
Can we back up?
Sure.
I have a question on, uh, on the board, uh, work sessions and, uh, board retreats. The question is, is there any limitation on where or when we have, it's not so much when, but where we have a board retreat, if we ever had another one?
Uh, don't believe there's any.
Like, we wanted to Canada, if you go there?
Yep.
Um, I think that if we go to Canada, at a, a fishing lodge, I think the community might have an issue with that, but legally, I think, um, I think you, does not have to be in the district. A lot of, um, retreats I've seen are in the district, some are not in the district. Um, how you work, and that, that's one piece that we might wanna put on there, I, I put on work sessions, but to tell you truth, a retreat is really a work session, so I, I think it would fall within those, um, places, but, you know, those are open meetings, and the problem is if you leave. Although, in essence, you, you can, I believe you might be able to do that, the question is, is that if it's an open meeting, is somebody really gonna be able to go to Canada to see the open meeting, so?
That's why I had a question, if there's any rules in the.
I don't, I don't believe there are, I think it's the, the desire of the board on what you would wanna do at that, but again, if it's an open meeting, you take the ability of somebody to go to the open meeting, I'm not sure, my argument is that, I'm sure it's an open meeting. All right? Um, the open forum, and again, it just gives specific things about them, it's, it talks about that in kind of the first part, to address the board on any topic, um. And you can kind of just take a look at that. Talks about holding certain types of meetings where they might be different, and we've addressed that down at, at the very end, where we talked about, uh, work sessions versus on committee meetings. Talks about the protocol, open forum will occur, and then there's some rules and regulations as far as expectations on, on what happens. Unless the board wants me to go through every one of these things, though, they're just gonna kind of give the highlights of it. Then, um, response to the open forum, we had a lot of discussion on this one, uh, because the way it is right now, so the response to open forum will be from the superintendent. Now, that's a little unusual, the reasoning of the policy committee is because if a community member or somebody makes a comment, and they want some information back, the question becomes is how does a chairperson be able to answer that question, when it's very difficult for the chairperson to talk to everybody else? The rules, don't say you can't talk to each other, but you certainly can't make decisions, and it's very bad when you're talking, like, that can leave an appearance, even if you're not, you might be talking about how hot the weather is, but you can give the appearance that you're making decisions outside of the board, and that's part of the, it's just that PR piece that becomes problematic. Um, so they said, you know, I should be the one, because you can't call me. Now, one of the things that, if we go down this path, and that's what we do, one of the things I really need to get then is your input. So, if somebody comes to me, and we want me to respond back on behalf of the board, I really do need to have board members contact me, so that I know what their thoughts are, so I can actually respond back to the community member. So, that's, really has to be an important piece of this, if that's going to stay like that. There's a part of me that would like to see some flexibility as far as superintendent slash chairperson. Um, there may be times when the, the board wants to talk about it right there and there, right then and there, and we have, uh, done some things. Response to open forum will be from the superintendent, superintendent may direct, direct to respond following the presentation, respond at the next school board meeting, recognize board members who wish to address either fellow board members, the speaker themselves, about the issue, create an agenda item, uh, either a committee or at the board itself, so all of those things could take place based on whatever the open forum concern or issue was. So, but at least for now, with superintendent, you can just give that some thought. Uh, no board action at the same meeting, I think that's good practice, I think if somebody comes there, you don't want to, um, take an issue that can be an emotional issue, hear things, I think you need to get thought to issues before the board responds to issues. So, I would say, I think, to have that, there's an important piece that, for the most part, unless it's a dire emergency, you just don't re, you know, respond and do something at the same meeting, take an action. Uh, agenda items, we talked about the fact that if somebody wants something on the agenda, they would contact me or the board chair, we'd have a discussion, whether it's an agenda item or a, a committee item, something like that, on how we're gonna address it, work with whoever has that particular piece. Um, one of the pieces in number two that the board needs to be aware of, and for the most, for the most part, for agenda items, that this comes straight off the MSB model policy. But one of the changes is that in number two, it says during the discussion of a business agenda item, is highlighted in, 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 you know, because, or hold it because it's business, it's the only, when we talked with the policy committee, those were the only things, not consent items, not personnel items. Where community could give input would be during the business portion of the meeting. So, that's another thing board needs to discuss, talk about, on, on all they want that. The rest of it really is just about, again, the functions, you know, of how this is all gonna take place, one person speaks at a time, if there's a large group of community members here, you wanna whittle it down to a reasonable amount versus, you know, hearing from 20 people in the same group, you might wanna hear from a, a couple of the people who feel most comfortable in that group doing it, so one to three, that type of thing. Then it gets down to work sessions, and, uh, at least in this policy, one of the things that I've highlighted in my mind is that no formal response during the work session is required, so you, a board member may call on a, a, a community member or somebody that's in the audience, but you do not have to respond to that person, there's no formal response to it. Uh, the other piece that I believe that, and I'm not sure if it's clear in here or not, um, we may wanna put a piece in here that talks about work sessions aren't necessarily, well, in my opinion, a work session sure shouldn't be an action spot. All right? I don't know if you wanna get into the piece, and it doesn't specifically say that, so having read it just right now, I think we wanna have a discussion about that during a work session. It is still a board meeting, we post and we do all that. From my perspective, I don't think it's good practice to say it's a work session where you're just gonna talk about something and then take action on it. I would rather have a work session be to talk about things, have good discussion, really be able to ferret out some of the things that are important, give the board members some things to think about, and, at least my preference, but again, it is up to the board, that it then would come back to a regular board meeting for a whole. But that's one piece that we should, should talk about, at least in the work session.
But does that, would that apply here or in a policy, or, this is a?
Public participation.
Public participation more? Would we maybe move that to, um, I don't know, I guess it's all about the policies, like, uh, how do you run a board meeting, or how do you run a work session?
Yeah, that's, that's something, I think it should be addressed someplace, or if it's just going to be, but it would be nice for the public to know that if it's a work session, it's for discussion, evaluation not for action.
We could mention that, I guess.
Well, I think we could mention it there, whether there's a better place to put it, I think, we could, we could look at that. And, and this is the first reading, so I will check some other policies to see where they're at. All right? So, I'll do a little bit of checking on that, but I think that's a great question, whether it should be there, but I do think the board needs to decide what the purpose of the work session is. And then committee, committee meetings, again, it just talks about committee meetings, no formal response, but I think, you know, personally, I found it helpful when we've had people in our committee meetings, or even at our work sessions, to be able to ask good questions and get an opinion, so we, we have allowed that, but again, right to limit it. You know, and I think five minutes is a great plenty for the most part to do it, but, you know, you can always extend that with an exception. Then just penalties for violation data privacy, that, that's kind of it. Like I said, this is the first reading, um, you know, I'm looking for input, I guess, from our policy committee. Doesn't have, doesn't have to be today, but I, I would suggest that you probably send me things, so at least I collect comments from the board on their, any of the concerns that might come up with this.
All right, so if anybody's got any really good ideas, send them to you. And we'll move on to number seven, review and consider approval of our membership with Resource Training and Solutions for 2013 and 14.
Um, I have looked at this, uh, you know, there's a part of me that I was torn between redoing this piece, um, to tell you truth, but Resource right now is doing an awful lot of work with us through I-Oseration, and, and that, I think, will really be an important piece if we continue to go down this, that journey with I-Oseration of improving instruction. So, at least for this year in particular, my recommendation is that we continue to vote on Resource.
Motion by Lou, second by Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, same sign. Well, we've got eight taking care, so we'll move on to number nine, information presented concerning alternative pathways the graduating class of 2014 and 15 can opt to take to meet the state assessment diploma requirement. Out of you.
It is me. Don, myself, and Bob, met for about, oh, two hours in his office, and then another two, two and a half hours in my office, looking at, um, what does the new state legislature say about the assessment and testing, et cetera. Don did go down to this, uh, assessment conference this summer for us as our, our testing coordinator, and they went through all of the changes. Uh, one of the biggest changes is the MCAs are going to continue to be there, but as accountability standards for the district and district systems, but no longer considered a graduation requirement for our seniors, okay? Prior to this, they had to pass either the MCA at, at the cutoff of 50, or in math, they have had the option to do the remediation program in order to pass at local standards. Uh, now they have taken that away and are in the process of coming up with what they call a career and college assessment, which is most likely, we don't know for sure, because they haven't done it, things are out for bid right now, uh, probably will take two years to get in place, but may look something like the ACT. ACT is even bidding on it. Uh, but we don't know what it's gonna look like, but what do we do during this transition, since the legislature said, okay, they, what are, you know, seniors don't have to pass this anymore? So, the alternative pathways is what the state has come up with, is if this, if these kids have passed the MCAs, they're done. Or they can show that they have, as you'll see in track A, if they can show that they participated in the ACT or the SAT by giving the school their information, um, or track B by taking the Accuplacer or ASPAM. Uh, the thing is, um, it has, they have to have taken the portion that they didn't pass in the MCA. So, if it was, in the math, the reading are no problem, the writing test, we don't have to worry about, because all our kids have passed it that are going to be caught up in this transition, uh, but other schools will. The ACT, the Accuplacer, ASPAM, none of them have a writing component. We won't need to worry about it, so it's a non-issue for us. Uh, so, with all the conversation, we came up with looking at the, the, these three tracks, the ACT, the SAT, the Accuplacer, ASPAM, or passing the MCA, being that local requirement to pass the state testing assessment. Um, it is gonna change again in two years, this is just the transition to that. Um, but because the, um, it is, uh, we had a guideline in place prior to this, um, we need to adjust that guideline for our diploma piece. So, I guess I'm asking the board to approve these alternative pathways towards graduation. Uh, we are not in the same position as some other districts that have had significant percentages of their students that didn't graduate because they didn't pass the MCAs, all of our students have. They actually have to contact those people, see if they've done any of these, and then give, give them their diplomas back about, oh, eight years. So, there's, our district, because of the success of our students, are, is sitting pretty good for this transition. Um, let's see, any other, um, pieces?
What if you have a student that moved in and hasn't?
That is where the ASPAM will come into play. Um, the piece with that would be the writing, uh, the di, the state says they will pay for one of these. ASPAM is free. Um, what I'm looking at doing is all our 10th graders, or, excuse me, 11th graders will take the ASPAM, so everybody will be covered. It's good information, it doesn't say they have to, you know, apply to the military or even on any type of list or anything, it's just information, and they can see how they do. Um, my thought is that we have all our 11th graders take the ASPAM. If we have a student that moves in, that would fall into that, we would have to sign them up for the ACT plus written, and then we would apply to the state to reimburse us for that. Um, the state says they'll reimburse us, they don't know what that will look like, and they said we can't claim it until spring or later. So, that's why my suggestion would be, we kind of, you know, take all of our students and, and work at administering the ASPAM. So, um, at our next board meeting, I'll also have some, there's some additional changes in regards to a, uh, career, um, a career, what is it? It's a career program, so, um, basically, what does our school have in place for students to look ahead at college and career readiness? So, we will be, um, presenting a program that will do nine through 12 with that, with our current systems, with some modifications and changes. So, that will be coming through, that also came through with the same legisla, legislation.
So, at this time, we're looking for our motions, or?
Just information.
It's just information, and the, we're accepting that, and you guys.
Thank you very much. We'll go on, we'll go on to personnel. Number one, review and consider approval of resignation request from, for Sololaba, effective August 13th, 2013.
Double.
Motion by Lou, second by Hella. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. On to number two, review and consider approval of resignation request from Stephanie Starkwell, effective August 22nd, 2013.
Double.
Motion by Lou. Second by Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Number three, review and consider approval of temporarily adding 1.5 hours per student contact date to food, elementary food service, effective August 28th, 2013 through January 1st, 2014. Assignment, Ann Larson, three hours to 3.5, Ellen Storkin, three hours to 3.5, and then new up higher, three hours to 3.5.
Some, some background, we have to, we have some resignations. Um, background information, back in January 15th of 2013, we added the same amount of time just for the rest of the year, it was temporary from January to end of the year. Um, I believe that we need to add this, approximately this amount of time to our food service at the elementary with all of the new regulations, um, that they're now based with. But we also wanna evaluate, we're gonna be hiring new people, now we need to see how things are gonna work, and before we commit, where we at least recommend to the board where those hours were to go. We'd like to get things running the way they need to be running to see, and then reevaluate. That's why we put the timeframe on to January 1st, and by that timeframe, we would come back to the board with a recommendation, uh, either making it permanent, or in some other manner that we think is more efficient for the food services.
If we put an hour and a half in there, what do the kids gain? Do they get food that they like to eat?
Well, it doesn't give them food, it's really.
If I hear one question, these kids don't like the food, and, um, I, I pulled a bill that, um, was written and looked, and it looks like there's a lot of variation, I didn't spend a whole lot of time on it, but it's. I didn't spend a whole lot of time on it, but it's like, do we make an analysis on something? Maybe we as adults like the food? That doesn't mean the kids are gonna eat this stuff.
No, and, and I'm sure that if I put Twinkies on a plate and let them eat a number of those things, they would, they would love it.
Or like the kids. The kids sat here and said they didn't like chicken, that was great. They wanted a chicken that was white.
And, and I would, and, and that's fine. So we pull all of the regulations that the federal government has now dumped on us. All the calorie counts, all the sodium counts, all of those counts. And they still need to fit within those parameters. So I'm not, yeah, go ahead.
I think buying has to a degree. I, too, daycare, we're on the same food program, we're on the same, um, the calorie count and the, uh, vitamin count and the carbohydrate, you know, it isn't an excuse for great chicken. It's a quality. And I, and I understand, they're trying to cut back like everybody, but when it comes to feeding the kids, you gotta get a happy medium. Because if we're staying within the, uh, we're staying within the guidelines and we're not spending very much money, we're staying very thrifty, I'm trying to come up with a good word for it here, and all the, for, the majority of the food is going straight in the garbage can, what are we doing?
I, I can talk to food service about options, but with those options, as long as the board is aware, if you're gonna bring in fresh chicken every day.
It doesn't have to be fresh, it just has to be top quality, not ground.
Well, I, I would hope that we're not ordering the bottom quality any day.
It's not, it's not that, it's, it is where you order it from. The food service people are free to order from wherever they want to, I mean, that's part of it. They might need more hours to find some different people to bring in.
Probably vendors.
Vendors, that's a good word. Because there, other schools are getting quality food and food that the kids, I think there's always gonna be food that kids want. Every one of us sitting here can remember the one meal that we all dreaded at school lunch, but there's gotta be, you liked everything.
No, no, you said they should not like everything.
Yes. There's gotta be some happy medium.
It just, it seems like this whole thing kind of floats through, and these kids are hungry. And they're hungry sometimes because they didn't eat their 800 calories or their 500 calories. And there's a big issue, as I read about the Secretary of Agriculture looking at seventh grade kids with the same calorie count as a senior. I'm telling you, I'm not a doctor or something, that just doesn't seem to work.
Well, keep in mind.
And, and the bill hasn't changed.
Yes, but keep in mind, they're not our rules. I understand what the board is saying about, we can look for other vendors for possibly other types of food, or if it's chicken, a different chicken. So we can do that. These particular hours don't have anything to do with that.
That has to do with preparing fresh.
These have to do with preparing food, which is now taking us much longer to do.
Because we can't just eat dessert anymore.
It, it, you gotta prepare the food, and it is taking more hours for them to do.
Yeah, I understand that.
So I, I certainly can get, go back to the board at another meeting and discuss whether, and I'll talk with the, the, the food service people on whether there is other places, if there's ways that we can do that, I can check on that. But at least for this agenda, this is just for them needing additional time for preparation of food. Won't necessarily increase the taste of the food. It's, it's the preparation right now, and, and some of the things they have to do now that they didn't have to do before.
I want a motion. A motion by Kella, we'll let Bruce stand in the second. Any further discussion?
I'll talk to the food service about the other concerns on the part of the board.
Um, I, I can discuss, uh, there used to be a food service committee, because I used to be on it. And we, and we, and, well, just kind of went by the by. But, um, in time, so that there was a place, uh, connection to the board. You know, if you want to do it, go right ahead, I'm just saying.
I don't, I don't know, that one, I didn't see in any of the literature that I had when I, when I came in, so I'll certainly check on that.
Well, I'm just saying, so that the food service, because, okay, kids have no problem coming to us going, the food isn't that good. So the food service has someone that they could talk to and say, you know, they're complaining about this particular item, but macaroni cheese, there's too much soup and not enough macaroni. Well, we have to go by these guidelines when we make it. I mean, there, there are some things, there's nothing they can do about, other than not serve it at all anymore, but.
Might just be able to piggyback off the wellness committee. And we have a lot of meetings, so maybe just get to that point, becoming more active and then adding that as a, a piece for the wellness committee.
They just really need a place where they can bounce ideas off of.
I'm hearing from a lot of the kids about the food also, is it acceptable for us to come in and give a meal here?
As long as you wanna pay for it.
Well, we have a motion on the two and a second. Any further discussion? All those hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, moving on to number four, review and consider approval of van driver's resignation request from Krista Gunderson, effective August 31st, 2013.
Ooh.
Motion's been made? Second? Second?
Second, I hope.
Second by Mark.
Second, I'm sorry. Ed Lewis.
Okay, motion's been, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Number five, resume, review and consider approval of maternity leave for Leah Pfeifer from approximately December 22nd, 2013 through February 14th, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Cheryl, second by Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number six, review and consider approval of resignation request from Jamie Stolen, paraprofessional, effective August 31st, 2013.
I would like to amend that slightly. Um, Jamie has been gracious enough to say that she would stay on longer until we can get this, um, hopefully filled, because this is a little harder when this is our nurse pair, um, to fill this, possibly to fill this position. Um, so I would like him to read effective 9/13/13, or 9/20/13, depending upon higher level replacement.
So moved with that petition.
This one's again?
Okay, I have a motion from Bruce, the second by, from Cheryl, with, for the, with the, uh, friendly amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So moved. Number seven, review and consider approval of hiring Donovan Lura, fitness center supervisor, effective August 28th, 2013. Motion's been, motion's been made by Lou, second by Kella. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to number eight, review and consider approval of hiring Ruth Omscheid, van driver, effective September 3rd, 2013.
Ooh.
Motion by Lou.
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? Hearing none, review and consider approval, or no, motion passed. On to number nine, review and consider approval of increasing John Kefler, assignment to .913 FTE, effective August 27th, 2013, due to special education needs.
Just, um, a little bit of background information, John was reduced because of reductions for this year's budget, but we need some help with our adaptive buy-in. So in essence, he lost a little here and then gained some there. If it wouldn't have been for the other reductions, he'd be full-time right now. So it just brings him up higher than he was to last year.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mark, second by Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Review and consider approval of increasing Mary Grassinger's assignment by .5 hours per day, effective September 3rd, 2012?
Ooh, 13, sorry.
Due to special education needs.
So moved, second.
Okay. We'll give the motion to Kella, the second to Lou. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I'm sure number one is not for informational pieces, I should have zapped that, I did not.
Um, we got one more personnel. Number 11, in addition to the agenda under personnel, review and consider termination of Blue Store Camp and Dennis Doncaster Van Drivers due to reduction of van routes, effective August 31st, 2013.
Um, the bus company will be taking tour of van routes, that's what's causing the reductions. Um, this is not in any way caused by the, the ability of the people to do it. They are both very valued employees, but it is a reduction of the van routes, that's why the termination is open.
Will they be taken on by the bus company by any chance?
Um, the bus company is talking to, uh, they don't believe. Correct. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mark. Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Can we make a note that Lou, Lou is staying from those guidelines? I was listening. I was watching.
Okay, now on to.
Just eliminate number one. I just forgot to delete that, so we're really happy. Most of the board members haven't even seen. Um, some good news, um, at the last board meeting, I talked about enrollment, and it was down at that time around 2021. From what we projected, now we are down 12 from what we projected. So it is, our enrollment has gone, gone up, so I'm happier, but I'd still like to see some more. Um, test scores are coming, we've talked about that a little bit today. We will be bringing in, um, a presentation on that, so you'll go much more into depth. You'll see a lot of information from tough groups and patterns, everything else. So I'm assuming at, at your meeting, I'm not sure about the next one, but probably the one right after that, I'm hoping to bring the first person down into help present information on test scores. So we'll update both the board and the community, and you'll get a lot, all the information on all of that. Uh, negotiations are continuing for all of our groups, it's certainly an adventure. Uh, recommissioning of buildings, I, I think we'll end up with you, or I want to tell, two other things I want to check, but I believe though, in the end, they will be the cheapest and most effective for us to do the recommissioning. Uh, we started the post agendas and the agenda on the website. So that is posting, um, gotta get a couple glitches out of it, but we'll continue to do that, we're just fine, I think. So we'll continue with that. First day of staff today, I thought it was just a wonderful day, uh, considering the heat in the building and, and staff having to put up with that. I, I think, I thought we had a great workshop on eye observation. Uh, teachers did some, um, data things, some meetings and that kind of stuff, and we're excited to be back. And it was just, I thought, just a terrific day other than a very hot day in the building. So certainly a concern for this week and, um, even more importantly, for next week when we have our students coming back. So we're certainly gonna have to watch the weather for that. Uh, just reminder about Thursday, we have the security and kind of safety meeting, it's just, uh, it is posted as a work session. So I, I posted it, that allows the board to at least exchange thoughts with the community. Um, not looking for any decision at all during that work session. It's really for our community or staff or anybody of the matter to come in and, and bring up an issue on either building security or safety issues that they have. So it'll start at 6:30, um, right now, it's posted for this room. If it stays as hot as it is, we may move it to our auditorium so that people feel more, more comfortable. But we're certainly gonna start here and post a sign on the door if we need to move it to the auditorium. It's only for the comfort of the people coming in, um, if they want to speak. So that's at 6:30. Um, indeed, students, more than welcome if they have some concerns they'd like to address. Uh, just reminder that, uh, we have a Yolanda Srope coming in from the, um, federal government about our reserve center that's on, again, on, not September 9th. Who has said that he'll be there, so he'll represent the board, but just a reminder on that. Um, we've been trying to schedule a conference call, and I do appreciate some of the work that Bruce has done to help schedule a conference call with a particular, um, person that we believe has been doing some of the piece about the alcohol on school grounds. So, and also I've been in contact with the city, we're gonna look at having a meeting just to discuss the issues that they see that this, this could prevent or present, um, for the city or for the, the district. So still gathering information on the legality piece of it. So the request by the board was, first, we need to find out whether it can legally be done, and then after that, if it can be, if it can't legally be done, kind of answers the question. If it can legally be done, then it still brings up the question of, is that something that we should be doing? Alright, so we're still gathering information on that. Any questions for me?
Oh, I do want to add something to your report about this morning, since I was giving the food service the bed, wrapped up for a minute. They did a really nice job this morning, they were there before everybody. Now, was that, oh, I'm gonna, uh, someone sitting next to me made the comment that that was the healthiest breakfast they had for a while, and everybody around there, we all kind of looked at it and went, yeah, probably.
And it was.
It was really good.
It was really good.
But, so.
The, the, and while we're on that piece, I mean, food service, uh, it does, they work extremely hard, they, they put on those types of things, and, and more than willing to listen. So I have no doubt they will certainly listen and, and have, have some discussion about what cannot be done. And our custodians also have done just an exceptional job getting our buildings ready, um, for our teachers and students to come back in some really uncomfortable weather.
Um, just a quick question about the safety meeting.
Sure.
Do you present some information to people, so if you have people from the public com to prompt discussion? Or are you just gonna walk in and open it? Because sometimes it's two different discussions.
Yeah, I could certainly talk a little bit about what other places, um,
Yeah.
Paul, police chief will certainly be here also to listen, but it's really to hear what they have to say. I can provide information on what other schools have done. You know, I can talk about the fact that, you know, schools have locked their doors and have a buzz-in system. Of course, those same locked doors and buzz-in systems didn't help the last couple of situations that have taken place. You know, there is, you know, certainly one of the things that the community will hear from me is that there is no perfect solution to this problem. There, you know, you lock your doors, you know, the last situation that took place, somebody got buzzed in, and the person walked in right behind him when the door was open. The situation in Connecticut had a buzz-in system. They kicked the door down or shot the door down. There's no perf, perfect way to solve this particular problem. We certainly want to hear what our community has to say about it. We can put buzz-in systems in, we can do that. For not tons of cost to the district. But whenever you start to put those types of things in place, it starts to restrict access and inconvenience during the school day. And I, you know, we need to hear that, so we'll hear, hear that particular piece, but, you know, I can provide that type of information, but really this is, is more a listening session to anybody that wants to come in and, and speak to this issue. And give us ideas, we certainly put it for the grant, for the, you know, the, the, the additional police officer, the SRO. Now, I can tell you that, again, there was a shooting in a place that had one of those. Um, unfortunately, that officer was the first one that got shot. You know, so there are no perfect answers to this problem. Unless you wanna barricade all the doors, you know, bulletproof glass everywhere, put up, you know, chain link fences, metal detectors, you know, where do you draw that line? And what do, what does the community want our schools to look like? All of those are, are part of this discussion, but we want to hear what they have to say.
And the threat.
That's important.
And to keep in mind, the threat may not always be somebody from the outside, you know? It, it may be somebody that is in the building.
You know, so all of those things, so I think it's listening, I think I can provide that to talk about it and hopefully entice discussion.
That's all I was curious about, because sometimes if the, if the police says anything, they'll.
Well, I think if they, yeah. I, I think if they come, we can talk to them and ask them what their initial concern is in that, hopefully we'll open up the door for some other discussion. I mean, I'm hoping to have people here. Just, you know, unfortunately, I remember our referendum meetings. And I had a lot of visiting with nobody, so I'm, I'm hoping that we have people.
So if you're doctors, no, you obviously called on it.
I, 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 I've done the newspaper article, although in the newspaper article, they had, it was a typo, and it was put on as August 2nd, it was, it's the 29th. I sent out a school reach, the other night, we put the article on the website. So I'm hoping, possibly in the paper tomorrow, that meeting might be listed, but I. So I'm hoping, possibly in the paper tomorrow, that meeting might be listed, but I...
I hope I put it in there.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, so I'm hoping that it's there so that it's, it's also reminders a day, because that paper will come out tomorrow, so...
Well, I think there's no messages working on that.
You know, there, there comes a time when I send out too many emails, they start to call me. So, you know, I, I think, you can send out as many as you want, but, you know, they got one yesterday, if I start sending out multiple emails, I guarantee that as many people might say, hey, thanks for the reminder. I'm gonna get a number, but I'd say, you know, he just told us, we're adults, you know, we should be able to remind, remember between, you know, a couple days.
I have to say, I think it's a really good idea to have a format where the public has, has been...
Yeah, I mean, it's more important, I mean, I have my ideas of what we can do and what we can't do, but it's important to hear what they have to say and what their ideas are.
Anything else to be dropped before the board this evening?
That's all I got.
Then we shall adjourn immediately.